I pledge this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, it's Kevin.
Hey Kevin, can you hear us?
Can you hear us? Yep, can you hear us? Kevin?
Yeah, yeah, somewhere, yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're real loud.
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Prising?
Here.
Snyder?
Here.
Bartello?
Here.
Trup?
Here.
Ister?
Uh, I need approval of a minute, what don't we have here, do we have all this?
Yeah, I sent the one today, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, if you don't want to approve the 325 since we just sent them out, let's not approve them since I'm sure nobody got a chance to look at them. I need a motion, accept a minutes in your reports.
Second.
Yep, name is second.
Bartello?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Okay, we just need to approve tonight a budget modification here, and Jamie's not here, no, she's not here tonight, but we've been talking about, you know, throughout the last couple meetings, uh, as far as updating and changing the money around in the block, we had since we didn't get, we just got to 2012s and that type of thing, so we just want to announce tonight, we don't have to vote or anything, we just want to announce that we're going to have a budget modification here on the 22nd at 6 o'clock, that'll be the first thing before the council meeting. SRI update?
That would be me, I'm here.
Yes ma'am.
Um, I just wanted to let everybody know that we're continuing to work on our membership. Um, Spark is still applying for monies through the Neighborhood Assistance Program to hopefully be used in the rehabilitation of the Albright Church. The hometown veteran banners have been mailed in, we have 56 new banners this year, um, and it's also not too late to hang your old banners should you choose to. Um, and then new with the Elm Street and Hill Neighborhood, the Hill Neighborhood has done a grant to receive funding for rain barrels and other non-point source pollution reduction methods, and we should hear back about that grant in mid-May. And then also I have some paperwork in front of you guys, um, to re-sign a cooperation agreement, we got, people have done it in 2007, and we need a new one to reapply or to go with our current application for the 12 ton block of Market Street. And it's right next to you. So, and it's exactly what was typed up and signed in 2007, so if you wouldn't mind taking a look at it, we need a resolution to say that we're still working together in the Elm Street project.
Okay, just a cooperation agreement?
Correct.
Yep.
Trup? Kevin?
Kevin?
Ister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's it for Elm Street, except I just wanted to let you know with this signature on that cooperation agreement, they will continue to review our current application that's already in the DBCD for the 1200 block of Market Street without the block being used in the public.
Good, thank you.
Any questions for SRI? This is pretty much the SRI and the Hill Neighborhood Council, as she said. Okay. Uh, redevelopment authority update, uh, we had a meeting on, I don't know if we meet Jim last, Thursday I guess it was, uh, got the list together of the properties and everything, we said the, we're trying to separate the vacant properties from the other properties, uh, I'm sure we've brought some in with you, there's any other highlights other than just moving forward with the, with the ownership of some of the homes?
Yeah, I can give you a quick update, we have, uh, six properties where we filed a court petition to complete the eminent domain process, all of those homes were homes that were empty, people gone, and the judge granted five of the six, and there will be a hearing scheduled by the sixth, uh, house, and that house is down on Packer Street, we're scheduled for mid-May with Judge Wiest, and hopefully we'll have six of six. When we finish that, we'll be up to 25 houses total, uh, where we completed, where we were able to take ownership through this process.
Okay, any questions, Professor, redevelopment authority? Alrighty, unfinished business. New business, truck bid, Jim?
Yes, apparently the street department works, put out the bid for a truck, just kind of in here.
I'm trying to get in overtime since it says truck. Have a good job, Jim.
Hey guys, give me a second, will ya?
What's that?
Don't give up on me so easy, I'm driving, I couldn't hit anybody.
Okay.
Get down off of me, alright, I'm back, thanks.
We're opening up the bids, Jim's opening up the bids, you want to read them off, Jim?
Yeah, the first bid is from Joseph Chris Savage, $1,550. Steve Cryer, $1,050. Last minute, scratch the business. Minimal bid was a thousand dollars, but we have pulled.
You're correct, Jim.
Thank you. Oh, Michael Renzo, $1,026. And, Katie Ashley, looks like the key, $1,225. That was the four bids for the 1970's British Chevy with a plow. There you are, Terry.
Carl Ashley.
I'm making a motion that, uh, Michael reviews the bids, and, uh, first one, the $1,550 is the high bid.
This could take hours.
Yeah, it looks like it.
This could take hours.
When you're reviewing that, Michael, Terry, no. That's a form of motion.
A second.
Thank you.
Ister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Ister? Or yeah, Trup?
Yes.
Sorry.
We have the streets great grant on here again, but you've touched base with that already, correct? Uh, Jim Hyer, full-time park recreation?
I'm a whole up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Michael was here about six weeks ago, five weeks ago, I lost a full-timer, he left us, I want to work municipal authority, and, uh, we're in the process, I don't have paperwork from another attorney.
Well, you're just taking a part-timer to a full-time position?
Exactly, it's a part-time position, or full-time position with a part-timer, it's working for the report about two years now. Uh, Terry, uh, Tammy Forbes, excuse me, select to make that form of motion.
Second.
Prising?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Who did we actually leave, Booth?
How?
Oh, Dick, right. That was a good man.
Joe, become OBR vendor?
Yeah, that's, um, actually the Office of Vocation Rehabilitation, um, and I wanted to, and the next place on the agenda is to hire a part-time code officer, and that's somebody who qualifies under the OBR program to have half of his pay paid by the occupational location rehabilitation for the first three months while we're, while he's in his probationary period. It saves me a lot of money, makes my money and my budget go a little further to do that. Um, it's just a technicality really, just to, just for us to sign on so that we can receive the assistance from the redevelopment program.
Is this having to do with my career rank, or how does this work? Do they have qualified people for different jobs, or you just have a list of people and you interview people from that, or what?
They have like a caseworker that works with them and tries to give them a job. Um, Terry, did you, you spoke to that woman, didn't you? They said that you could send a letter, send a bid and make me available at time, but it takes, so I think you were in contact with her, but, uh...
It was, I don't remember.
So it has nothing to do with the people upstairs?
Not that I'm aware of, no, not that I'm aware of, but I have papers up here, it's...
Isn't there typically a contract requirement or at least an agreement you're into to formalize that OBR vendor relationship?
That's what this is all about. That's what we're doing here.
So I guess do we have a copy of that somewhere, or?
Have it downstairs.
So you had a chance to at least redo it, Terry?
No, I did not, it's the one I had to do.
What would you agree to take under?
Typically this is where it establishes the, uh, payback parameters, often what's required, and again, I'm just speaking from some experience, but typically what's required is, uh, you have to pay a person's compensation in advance, and then you get a reimbursement, sometimes at the end of the month. So it's a reimbursement program, not a, we only cover 50% and they cover 50, we'll cover 100%, they reimburse the 50. So those types of things are detailed in the documents that way we understand exactly what it's going to be costing us and what timeframe we're going to get reimbursed. It deals with things like their onsite assurance requirements, things like that. Whenever they're involved with that program, sometimes they're still considered a employee of that organization, in addition to an employee here, so that some of their, um, some of their typical HR requirements are covered by their, in that organization until the relationship resolves where they're not covering it anymore. So those are the types of things that are often in the agreements, that's why I was just wondering if you had a chance or if you were, it doesn't sound like it.
Well, here's to Michael's turn, does that mean, the next person we hire has to take that organization, or?
No, it's, what typically it is, it's a, it's a program where individuals who have special, uh, sometimes it's disabilities, things like that, it's a program that supports them getting back into the workplace. Um, so this is specific, I guess, right, this is specific to this particular person. So it's only on a case-by-case, individual-by-individual basis that you normally would enter in this on the line.
So it's, they only, they only help us out in the first three months, is what I said, to help us out with half his pay during his probationary period.
But aren't we doing this backwards, shouldn't you interview people and then say, okay, here's the person I want to hire?
I do have a person I want to hire, that's the next item.
You didn't advertise and interview people then, did you tell me?
Yeah, it was from the original, from the first group I was going to hire too, I said at the last meeting, I wanted to get these two or three, these people, this is the second one, but I would have had them both at the last meeting, but I had to get this paperwork from the OBR and have a photo on it in order to try and hire them, so.
Well, Randy, Dave, Michael showed up to review this contract before they go, enter into a contract, so, go to table the matter.
In this day and age, it's just...
Well, this is the guy that is going to work between, he's, he's going to do nothing except redevelopment, between the redevelopment authority and the code office, that's going to be his sole responsibility.
Well, I thought the last first person you hired was going to be that.
He's going to do some of it, but not the sole responsibility, he's going to do other stuff.
You missed the redevelopment, I thought for sure you'd be there as your new employee in the redevelopment authority.
I was my friend, new employee, but...
Well, that's what he's going to do, you ought to understand what's going on there.
All right, you want to bring your redevelopment attorney, Joe?
First of all, she wasn't here during that time, and I just, I wasn't prepared to bring her, I didn't have her prepared to even, I didn't know what she was going to say, so...
Well, I agree with Jim, let's at least get Michael at the next meeting to look this over, make sure we're not having any ties. And I think, it sounds like a wonderful organization, I just get more concerned with the fact that, what it means for the next person.
What would it tie us to, that's what I'm curious about, what are you worried about?
I want to make sure when we advertise, when you advertise for any employee, you should advertise citywide or state, whatever you want to do, that anybody can, can join that organization. Then after you're done with your interviews, then you say, well, here's my best person, and we can do this, or we can do that with them. I just think you're doing it backwards, you've already picked out a person because they belong to this organization, or maybe not because of that, but clearly this organization is...
No, no, it wasn't because of that, but after I did decide on them, they said, we can help out, and they thought they were able to commit, and I thought, well, boom, see if we can hook up with this assistance for the first three months.
And it sounds like a great idea, but on the other hand, if something happens, if six months' amount doesn't work out, is there any repercussions because we have some contract that we're not aware of, that's all I'm asking. I just won't, I haven't never read it.
I had to sound out some words, but I got it. I, I did get, the one thing I noticed was that, uh, the names are, are blank, uh, but I guess that's probably coming up on your mind. It says here, it is expected that the name, and that's where we put it in, will become a permanent employee following successful completion of the OJT program, and this particular contract is for a competent receptionist, uh, which would be for proper phone and customer protocol, administrative support tasks, how to greet persons entering the establishment, determine the nature of the visit, here we call complaints and transmit information regarding this to staff and personnel.
Well, that's what a disability, that's what a person with a disability typically do, and I'm sure, uh, living stuff.
Which is very nice, that's what the contract says. But it sounds like, before you hire somebody, we actually need to get an agreement that spells out the specifics of this particular new hire, and with detailed, their new job prescriptions, not obviously, this is really, this is, uh, at best, an example agreement, with the hope that we want to enter into something that's detailed, specific to this particular.
Well, I...
So we'll table it for the next meeting, is what you're saying?
Yep, and take your copy and try to think in what you want to do with the person.
If they could get a draft together that's specific to this particular person, what their jobs are going to be, then I think we're right on target. We need that something that is...
We'll put that on hold the next meeting.
Yep.
Jim PA, air pen dot, street closure?
There's a list on here for this upcoming year.
Pen dot has a new form, and it takes like several months to get all the information to them and to get the approval back, so I thought we'd just do it in the long time.
These are the events that we'll be closing, the Market Street, National Night Out on August 6th, Franklin's Memorial Service, October 13th, Halloween Parade, October 17th, Halloween Day Parade, November 29th, Nigger's Eve, December 31st. I'm making a motion to fill the proper paperwork out, and send out for those dates.
Jim, do I have this river festival on that? What'd you say that?
River Festival.
That might have been done, we'll double check that.
Okay, I didn't hear that, alright.
You don't have a date, I'll handle it.
It's, uh, 17th and 18th of August.
Let's just put it on, Kevin, just in case we didn't, okay?
That'd be a great idea, gentlemen, we're doing that, gentlemen.
No, I think we did.
And also, uh...
August 27th and 28th.
August, uh...
17th.
7th on 10th.
Terry, uh, July, uh, 10th, Rose 4th Street. Community date of the North Village.
Right, July 10th or whatever the exact date is. So now we have Columbia 7. It's always a week out. Thank you, Kevin, I think we've got them all now. Do we have a motion?
Yep.
A second?
No.
I'll say that.
Thank you.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes. Uh, approval panel voices, Todd?
Uh, yes, everyone would have received the, uh, payables report via email at the close of last week. I can make a motion this evening that we take care of outstanding payables in the amount of $53,000, $136.12 from the general fund, and then $3,036.50 from just a few of the account first.
Bartello?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
David, under the payment bills, a final payment on the Riverfront Project, uh, to HRI, sum of $478,585.55, that'd be the final payment for the project. I'm making a motion, maybe a second, to make that pay out, and the due of the money in the account.
I'll send it.
Ister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Trup?
Yep, yes.
Good job, good job on that. Is that it for the Riverfront?
That's it.
How we make it out with that light pole that got run over by that car?
Now, I'm here for the repair, we need a piece for it, uh, it's a tree, I have to dig up the paperwork, they know it's a maple, I'm not sure what species of maple, so, uh, to market that activity, it's a landscape, or...
Taxes, operation, Todd?
Uh, yes, and your reports, uh, poll reports, we have the request for city taxes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept, basically the amounts shown, the individuals shown, it's got a reason.
Trup?
I'm going to stand because I have a book to do, so...
Okay.
Ister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
I just have one more thing on the new business. This is the second time this happened, so I just asked Michael to, to make sure we get this straightened out, and pretty much what, what you have in front of is a request that's been made by an attorney under the right-to-know law for the inspection of a city computer, and then Michael's definition is pretty much that it is a, the request is proper under the definition section of the right-to-know law, the record is at issue and require inspection of a computer that is owned by the city, I suggest that a council vote should be taken on a modern issue of make a computer available for inspection under the right-to-know law. The motion before council for the vote would set forth the time, date, and place available for the computer to be inspected, the city clerk has a person reasonable for open records, compliance matters should be present for the inspection. Uh, the definition of the record and the formal request are attached to the memo for his files. I'll get through yours, Terry. So anyway, what we're, what we're pretty much doing in this day and age, while we're a little bit behind in some things, we're just trying to update it so everybody understands that, that we all have computers and those things are up for inspection when people ask for right-to-know opportunities. You want to mention anything else?
Yeah, we went through this once before with the daily item, where they asked to look at a computer, and then it was done, it doesn't matter, of course, but here it's, it's from an outside person, who's seen it before, around in Francis, who we always see. Uh, but, uh, the law is very up to date, that it's digital information as well as paper information that is supposed to be made, and the case law is that where the computer is used for businesses' purposes for the municipality, and I think in this case is, you know, in this one, it's for Joe's computer that was purchased by the city, uh, it was used for business purposes, and Joe agrees with this as he has a little deal with it, so, I think it's a non-issue, but since it's a little unusual, I thought it'd be good to have it on.
When was that, honestly?
Uh, this came in by fax from...
4-3.
And, and we did this before, so I don't, yeah, I agree with you, but it's not an issue, I just want to put it in a minute, so we have...
Is this the one where you sent me the email about the correspondence from everybody, or?
This is from the same firm.
It's another one, from the same law firm on the Jersey Shore, I'll give you, I'll give you the...
It's a five days after, or, or you're not, you're not, you're not giving them access to it, or what is?
No, we're just saying that they have access to it, they can make arrangements with you, or me, or Todd, or anybody else's computer they want, to do that, correct?
That's right.
That's all we're saying.
I was just wondering what it was saying.
Yeah, we're just letting the public know and everybody know that that's available, and we recognize that it's just like a piece of paper. But I, I just want to get this in the record that this is how we're going to do it.
How do I get back to them by detention?
I even spoke to her as of today, so...
Oh, okay.
It's not as if we're going to be, uh, give her a black eye because of the dates.
All right, so I make that a motion, we adopt that tonight?
Second.
Prising?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Uh, audience comment?
I have, I have one.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
I just have one comment, that, I think last year we purchased some land up by tennis courts, right, to, to prevent a certain type of housing from coming into the city.
We bought a piece of ground in the middle of a recreation complex, yes.
And, this is our, this is what we just approved by our plan, if you want to take a look at it. I think it looks rather similar.
I'm not sure what I'm looking at, what I'm looking at, a house?
A house.
Okay.
But doesn't it look like a mobile home?
This is a mobile home?
No, it's not.
Home?
I'm saying it was the look that we were worried about, that, that worried about the look in the neighborhood, we were worried about trailers that were rentals, we were worried about that, but these are new plus rentals.
What does that have to do with the property of the middle of the recreation complex?
Well, I'm just saying, we, we did want to prevent those kind of things from the city, and you even showed up at this on the hearing board to say that there was no place in the city for this type of housing, and, and now we're proving...
I showed up saying there was no place in the middle of the recreation complex for 10 used mobile homes, but I said, I had no idea what that is, and, is somebody going to get somewhere, or what are you doing?
No, that's the new house on Warner Street, that's the new house on Warner Street, that you mentioned at the last meeting.
Okay, well, I haven't seen anything, you're doing it in the park.
Yeah, I know, but, well, that's what our plan had been made approved already, so that's, if that's...
Was there something illegal like this home?
No, but there wasn't, the other ones either, is my point.
But this isn't a trailer.
No.
That's on a foundation?
Yeah, reminds me of the one over in Norrie on Duke, going towards, uh, Walton, right inside in the corner, there's a double rancher stacked, and then, that sort of reminds me of looking at it there.
I'm just saying, we gotta, you know, we're going to hold the law, one day we gotta hold for everybody, they just, they can choose, you know, who, who's allowed, or means something that looks like that, who isn't.
Jim, there's something like Mr. Wolf's house up there on 4th Street, it doesn't exist, it's a, by a home.
I don't know Mr. Wolf's house, but...
No, this will be sticked though.
This is on a foundation, this is not a mobile home.
It's not a mobile home.
It's only 20 wide by like, what is it?
Well, the lots are only 30, there'll be a lot of 20-foot buildings in the city, hopefully, because most of our lots are only 30, and we need setbacks, so, I, I don't know what this, is this the back or the front?
I'm saying, if somebody was going to put a mobile home next to it, why would we complain about the mobile home, when it looks exactly like that?
Joe, to me, a mobile home isn't on a foundation, a mobile home sits on a bunch of tires and you put metal around the box, that's a mobile home to me, that's what they were going to put up there. I, I, it's apples and oranges as far as I'm concerned, but if, if you don't like this concept, then you want to bring something back to us in the future so we don't build homes like this, because I'm telling you, there's going to be more, I, I have no idea who's building this, or who's designed it, or anything else, but there's a lot of 30-foot lots in this city, Sunbury, that I think we should put homes on, or not us, that people should be building homes on, so I'm sure you're going to see more things that are 20-foot wide, because that's...
I'm not complaining about that, I'm complaining about the fact that we purchased nine lots so that we wouldn't have something like that, you know?
Uh, I can't agree with that, if somebody were to present us with nine of these, maybe we would have put nine of them on there. That's not what the proposal was at that time. Anything else?
No, that's it.
I'm sorry, audience comment, Mr. Miller.
There's a rent that can be done on Reagan Street between 4th and 5th, all those, uh, when the gas company worked there, you go through there, you just bounce, on the other side, people going up on the other side.
Are they done with that, Kevin, do you know?
Yeah, I talked to the gas company on, uh, earlier last week, and they got the pen dot, and, and had them do a half-paid one, Reagan Street, um, then they're going to do a 50, they're going to do a half-paid one, that one used to be done at all, they wanted to go back to, but that was discussed in the past, in the years. And on, uh, South 4th Street then, Mr. Miller, they're going to put that hold yet, because they're not quite done with that, uh, project yet, because they had to go and jump on another project that needed to be done quicker, so they'll come back to that. But, uh, they are talking to the pen dot, or Reagan Street, and I spoke to them last week, I finished up our sheets too, having our whole tour up, okay?
Yeah, great, Kevin.
No problem.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I haven't gotten a response from the city concerning my March 18th, 2000, or March 18th, 2013 letter, as you suggested, I sent that to Mr. Bartello, inquiring about the zoning and code enforcement that is lacking on Cell Tech site.
Right, and we, and Mr. Bartella got that to me, and I have that in our city engineer to give you a documentation back, he's not here tonight, but I'll see if we make sure it's not here in two weeks, for the next meeting.